Good evening. I call to order the September meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. We have a, we had a very lengthy schedule last month and the staff has made a little white on us tonight, so let's make the best of it. Those that are here, welcome and appreciate you being here. I want to ask Mr. Keith to give our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you now, dear Lord, with thanksgiving in our hearts. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to see another day. Lord, we thank you for your grace and we thank you for your mercy. We ask that you will be with us throughout our deliberations. Lead us, guide us, and direct us. In Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Keith. Approval of the minutes. Our commissioners received our packets. We've had a chance to review those. If there are no changes or corrections, I'll call for a motion. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. And like sign nay and ayes have it. All right. Other business. I think that kind of brings in staff.
Yes, yes. Thank you Chairman, members of the commission. I did want to, after last month's meeting, there was some general discussion around sketch plan. And what we really wanted to do is provide some information for the commission to help them better understand what role Planning Commission plays with the sketch plan approval. Because it certainly can be a little confusing as to what it is you're approving and what, where your responsibility lies and what it is that you should be looking for and that type of thing. So what I wanted to do is very quickly go over what it is the commission's responsibility is in regards to sketch plan. So within section six, it very clearly states what the Planning Commission's role is with sketch plan. So the sketch plan's middle, I'll just read this real quickly. Review and approval process is intended to benefit the developer of a proposed project and/or his agent by providing an overview of the proposed development confirming that it meets the basic intent of these regulations prior to the preparation of a more formal and involved development plan. So what that is essentially saying is that Planning Commission's role is to approve the general layout of a proposed subdivision. And that can be anything from a 100 lot subdivision to a five, like what we're seeing here with the church property, any, any property that subdivides five or more lots has, has to come to Planning Commission for final approval with the sketch plan. It also covers, which we don't see very often, any major utility extensions that a, that an individual's paying for. So if, let's say, an industrial property located inside the city needs to extend water and sewer, you know, 500 feet up a roadway, that's something that would come to Planning Commission as well. And essentially what it, what Planning Commission is doing is confirming staff's review of the general layout and overview. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what that includes. So within a sketch plan, again, this is, this is just a very, while staff tries to get the developer to get it as detailed as possible, it's, it's essentially to a level to where staff can say, everything's going to work, whether it be the utility, water and sewer, stormwater, the lot layout, as far as meeting all the dimensional requirements. We, we want to find out what the total acreage is. We want the names confirmed, so making sure that the street names do not conflict with any other street names in Florence County. Again, the approximate location of the utilities, making sure we're confirming that it, the water and sewer and stormwater are all located where they go, where we want to see them within the right of way. Again, the approximate size and location of stormwater management areas, so ponds and things of that nature. When, when a sketch plan is brought to Planning Commission, staff is making that recommendation saying that it is meeting all the intent of the code, that it's meeting those requirements. Sometimes there are minor variances, like right of way width, cul-de-sac length, some of the things that Planning Commission can approve variance wise. And we try to hit on all those. And I think the, from my interpretation and review of the code, the intent is to essentially spread that burden. You know, sometimes developers can come in and push limits on codes due to cost of things or what have you. And it's staff's responsibility to hold the line on a lot of those things often because, again, you know, these utilities, these water, sewer, stormwater lines, all the roadway, all of those things are our responsibility and for operation and maintenance for the rest of, you know, this city's going to be responsible for all these things long after I'm gone. And so we've got to make sure that all those things are done correctly. And a little bit of Planning Commission's role is to help us hold that ground and say, you know, it gives, gives a level of review and approval that is outside of staff's and takes, spreads some of that burden. And so that is, that is the role. When a, when we bring a subdivision before Planning Commission, we, and we've certainly tightened it up here lately because I think we've seen a little bit more, just the pace of development has caused developers and engineers to not have all their ducks in a row, so to speak, with some of these subdivisions. And so we've kind of tightened the straps a little bit to say, we, we want to make sure all these items are addressed before coming to Planning Commission and straightened out. So when they come, you know, we, we may not know for certain that the, the stormwater, every line is, is exactly where it's going to be, but we feel very strongly that it's meeting all the intent and requirements of the code. And those fine, final details get worked out after Planning Commission approval, so...
If I could interrupt you just a second.
Yeah.
I have a, I guess a question, theoretical question. Let's say that staff reviews it and in our packet, staff recommends approval of sketch plan. Are we in a position to disagree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And how and what do we look for, other than the confidence that the staff has reviewed everything? What knowledge or skill do we possess to go against staff?
Well, I think it lies mainly within making certain that the utilities, that the stormwater, all those things are in place. So when you, when you look at it, look at a subdivision, I think Planning Commission knows well enough to say, you know, is there public right of way? Do all these lots have access? Is water and sewer shown? Do we see an area for stormwater? If, if Planning Commission does not see those things or any of those items are missing, that is certainly within your responsibility to say, you know, this doesn't look right. I don't see the public access that every piece of property is supposed to have. I don't see the water lines, where, you know, how are these people getting water? All of, all of those items.
See, you put a burden on that.
There's a little bit of a burden. That's correct. That's correct.
And so maybe we need some training in, or I know that I can't look at that and determine if the water line is appropriately sized or if it's connected in a...
Right.
I mean, it's, it has been my impression that the staff wants to, because you have the engineers on your staff who are supposed to go through that sketch plan.
Right.
And you're asking us to compete with engineers.
I think one, one thing that may probably give commission members a little bit more confidence in, in this review, we have a checklist that staff goes through, checks, are these items complete? Are they in here? Along with the engineer. And that may be something that we include in the packets. That way, it's very clearly, if, if we don't have an item checked, it's not there. That's our responsibility to review that. That burden's solely placed on us. And if it's not there, there better be a justification alongside it stating why it's not there, whether, you know, maybe it's not required, maybe those items are already in place. But that may be something that we can do in addition to further education down the road.
Commissioners, can I get an informal check yes on the checklist? They will post it when we have a sketch plan review and we can look to see that all the checks have been marked. And if something's not marked, we, we have comfort in asking that question. Can I say that we have unanimous yes? Let's put it in there? That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we need detailed, detailed check.
Yeah. Let's do that, please.
Okay. That's, that's really what I wanted to hit on. Again, because like you said, there, there is a, a level of responsibility that's placed on the commission members that is outside of most folks' expertise. And there's a lot of, I guess, faith and trust built in staff, which is good. But it's our responsibility to work together to, to approve these. And the more information we can provide you and confidence we give you, the better.
Yeah, because one thing was said, because that last meeting, you brought another sketch plan back to us, but you had missed.
That's right.
And then...
Now, what is that? Box had been checked or unchecked? Because y'all missed that one item that Mr. Moses is talking about.
That's something that will, we will need to add to the list of review items. It's typically something that we, you know, setbacks and, you know, it's kind of general item, but that, that may, that's, that's an item that we need to detail further in that checklist.
Let me ask this question. I don't mean to be hogging. The sketch plan, if we approve it and the staff suggests we approve it, that doesn't mean that the developer or petitioner...
That's right.
Gets to get away with that. He still has to provide the final drawings, which is heavily scrutinized.
Yes.
And so he's not going to get away with something that might have been missed in the sketch plan. This can be absolute in the final plan.
That's correct.
But we don't approve the final plan, the city does.
That's right. And that, that's, that's a very important thing to bring up. So let's take a subdivision, for instance. Once it gets past Planning Commission, the, the sketch plan's approved. At that point, the engineers really go to work in finalizing all, all the lot layouts, the right of way. They're making sure that there's no reverse curves in the roadway. And if there is, it meets a certain level. And so we get into much finer review after sketch plan. We, we probably, in reality, provide you all with plans that are a little bit further detailed than what's needed, mainly because sometimes there is a little bit of, you know, you give somebody an inch, they tend to take a mile. You know, sometimes they walk away from sketch plan approval thinking, oh, we're, you know, we're done, you know, this. But it gets into much more detailed review. We then conduct our MS4, where MS4 is our stormwater review that gets sent off to the state. It goes through our utility with our engineer and sometimes if we're uncomfortable with it, we may even have our consulting engineer take a look at an item. So it gets into much further detail. And if there's any discrepancies whatsoever that cannot be corrected at development plan approval, it, it could potentially get kicked back if it makes any significant changes. Back to Planning Commission for further sketch plan.
Let me ask a question. Why can't we just, instead of giving us a sketch plan, give us a final plan of what the developer's trying to do with that particular property?
Could you... What are, what are you trying to ask?
Okay, you say sketch plan. And you say that's not really all of what the developer is going to do and all of what the staff is going to do. But why don't come with us, to us with a final plan as what is, this is the plan that they're trying to do with that piece of property?
With, with development plan approval? Well, I think at that point, if we were to, if we were to take that route, it certainly becomes well outside of Planning Commission's ability to review and approve. At that point, you know, we've got, we would be asking you to approve a stormwater SWIP, a stormwater management plan, that's about that. You know, it gets, it gets into placing a burden and a responsibility upon Planning Commission that, that I think would be unjust of, of us to require that. And it's certainly something that, you know, again, those, those liabilities and responsibilities of the final stormwater review, utility review, all that is solely on the city. So if, let's say we, we did something that was inappropriate or we wouldn't approve the matter and it became legal, then at that point, it is a matter between the developer and the city, where it's, you know, you all are looking at it from a much larger perspective, how it, you know, plays a role for that entire development. And it removes you all from that, that portion of it.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yeah. We'll keep working on it and it's important to work together with the commission and make sure that we provide information and give you all a higher level of comfort and confidence moving forward with sketch plans.
And starting next month, will we have that checklist?
We will, yes. Yes. We've got a few items that are getting close to that, so I think we can certainly do that.
Thank you for offering that. All right. I'll pick back up on our agenda. PC 2023-24, this is a request to rezone from CA to NC 15 at 2000 Marsh Avenue. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning.
Good evening. I'm ready to go.
Hopefully we won't be here that long.
Staff report, please.
Especially considering this, yes, this is, should look very familiar. We addressed this last month and this is a twofer. The first part deals with the rezoning of a portion of the parcel that John Calvin Presbyterian Church is located on in the Sandhurst community on, at Marsh Avenue and Third Loop Road. And the second part of it is the sketch plan review of subdivision of this parcel. But as we spoke last month, they want to take the eastern 150 foot depth of it and zone it to NC 15 in order to subdivide it into five single family parcels. And so it would look like this once the zoning map was changed, leaving the church at, at the campus zoning designation, which is appropriate for a public assembly use such as, as the church. And then, as I said, the 150 feet on the west or east side would be zoned the same as all the neighborhood around it, which is that NC 15, which is the largest, least intense residential use in neighborhoods. And the future land use calls it public and institutional, but everything around it is neighborhood conservation. So that would be in keeping with everything around it. Again, here, the, this is the portion that would be rezoned, these five lots would be zoned to the residential and all of the standards for the NC 15 district would then apply to that portion of the parcel. These are some pictures of the area and, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. We postponed this to this month. It seems that we, several of the commissioners wanted to give the church a chance to either explore additional information, look for the old covenants and restrictions. And I think that was, and I think you posed that motion, Mr. Moses, to delay it to this month.
Right.
And, and we do not have a public hearing portion of this, but can I ask the representative to come forward and maybe tell us where he is on that? Please come forward and give us your name, please.
Good evening. I'm, excuse me, Tom Sharon with John Calvin Presbyterian Church back, and we appreciate the opportunity to be back here. We did have a meeting with the residents from the Sandhurst neighborhood. And I will say, first of all, we have not, they don't have copies of the covenants. We have not been able to find them. However, in searching the original plaques, John Calvin Presbyterian Church was never part of the subdivision, of the Sandhurst subdivision. One of the first plaques that they did actually showed John Calvin Presbyterian Church parcel cut out, six acres plus. And then around them, they had their lots, and I think they called them groups by alphabet, that type of thing. So we are not part of the covenants. But we did, we had a meeting, as you know, there was some concern from the residents about the lot size. So we arranged a meeting at the church and I actually went online and the GIS for the county and downloaded several maps as far as the various lots around their residents. And in reality, the pure Sandhurst subdivisions, lots range anywhere from an eighth of an acre to less than a third of an acre. And close to, like, Mrs. McStratten was here, was the one that spoke last week, and her house faces Castleberry, which is perpendicular to Calvin Circle, right across, right from where she lives, there's some lots that are less than, like, .29 of an acre. So we went through, looked through the information and we talked some more about her concerns as far as the rental property maintenance. She was talking about some property on Third Loop that the, its college partner bought to sell and it wasn't maintained. So what we decided was, was two things. Number one, if we would give them the option, our session decided to purchase the two lots that are across John Calvin, I mean Calvin Circle from them, if they wanted that. And then second of all, we have consulted with the attorney and I'm going to present to session our meeting next week. We're going to set up covenants for these five lots that's going to require certain things. We will require a minimum size house of 1,500 square feet excluding garage and port space. We feel that will meet the average of the neighborhood. We will certainly allow, the city allows it two-story homes, because a lot of those homes are 2,000 plus square feet, but they are two-story. We will also require maintenance as far as the yard. We will require, we will restrict no parking off of the driveway. And a lot of the complaints, you know, that they had, that's where it's coming from for most rental homes, no one is managing those. So we're going to present that to our session, I feel certain we will. Then also, we gave them an opportunity to offer a option to purchase the land. Neither one did, but the last I talked to Mrs. McStratten, she'd said, and then she sent me a text, she said, you know, said, I've been a neighbor here for 18 years and we're looking forward to another 18 years. And, and I think it's not unusual, not uncertainty, when you sell lots and you don't have restrictions on them, people pretty much can do what they want to do on rental property. I mean, where my wife and I live, we got people own their homes and they don't keep it up the way that they used to. So I think we came up with a win-win situation on this. But it was a good opportunity to sit down to listen to them. So I'm hoping that we can get a certain amount of restrictions. And I feel certain that John Calvin, even though we'll be the, lack of better description, the enforcer, we won't have an HOA, but we will make sure we can police these owners. Because, you know, we talked about the rental and we don't think we can restrict after the first purchaser probably to not rent. But if we keep these options in place and they rent, we can restrict the term of the rental, like six months more, no more than two during the year, that type of thing. And also, we will hold the owners accountable for their tenants. We should be able to keep it looking the way that they would like it to look. So that was the option that we took. And if everything is positive right now, and we're, we're just ready to move forward. But it was a good suggestion to have a meeting, so.
Mr. Sharon, I want to thank you, one, for coming tonight. It was very helpful. And also, the degree of diligence that the church and the neighborhood showed in a cooperative spirit. I think if Miss McStratten, she was really the only voice. And if, of course, she's not here to represent herself, but I, I think it's a story with a happy ending.
Well, I think it really is, you know, because some people hesitate to express their views. I'd much rather have it come at the start so we can try to at least help address their concerns, because after we had sold it, we could go after the fact and say, look, we don't expect you to do this, that type of thing. So I think it was a win-win situation. And to prove John Calvin, we say we have a lot of respect for this neighborhood, so I will present to session, we have an obligation, these restrictions or covenants, if you will, whatever, on these properties, and we will make sure that people follow it. And so that's how we're going to present it.
Does the commissioners have any other questions or comments?
I have one question. So how long would it take in order for you guys to draw the, a draft of the restrictive covenants?
We, what we're going to do is, I've talked to the, I have actually started doing, we have an attorney we're working with out of Myrtle Beach, that's actually, his mother-in-law's member of our church, he's a developer attorney. I'm going to send him the covenant, so we're working on it now. We have, we decided, we don't do a whole lot ahead of time because we don't want to jinx it. We don't like to do ahead and maybe make jinxing. It won't take long. I will tell you exactly what we're doing. We have, I know where I live, I have some covenants and we're actually going to draft out of that. And I've talked to the attorney about that. And it's going to be very simple covenants as far as something that's not unreasonable at all, whether it's just keeping the grass moved, no parking on the grass, you know, you have to stay in your driveway. If you put a building that has to be comply architecturally, I guess, you know, a storage building in the backyard, we will require the yards to be fenced with probably a six-foot white PVC type fencing, so you have the property. We're going to probably require that, if you have a saddle like this, you can only have one, but it's got to be in your backyard in order to protect the front of it. And that's what we're doing. It's not really a whole lot, not a lot of this detailed stuff that I don't understand, but something that addressed the concerns that these neighbors had. And that's what it was. Multiple people parking in the yard, you're going to have several residential, I'm sorry, commercial vehicles parked in the yard, you had trash, it, it just was going downhill. That's what we're going to be doing.
Can you assure this commission that you will not sell the first lot until the covenants and restrictions are?
That's right. We will, exactly. And, and, but I, I have started on them and, and so that's where we are right now. We don't want it too complicated with stuff that's enforceable. And what we will do is, the covenants will actually have the clause in that says, you know, you have X number of days to pay this. If not, we'll go ahead and correct it. And then they will have the covenants will state that we have the option of actually, you have to pay for it or actually put a lien on your property. So we're trying to incorporate all that in to do that. And, and also, I just, I just don't want to put the cart before the horse, because I have learned, before I retired, I was in government many years. And, you know, you kind of work until you get to the stage and get it started, but we will, we will have good covenants. And what I told Mrs. McStratten is, once we get a draft and done to do it, I will send her a copy of them. But I did, I went back over with her in the meeting, what she discussed here is her concerns, but rental property. but rental property and this and the size of the lots, that type of thing. But I think I will, we will address all the concerns, but yet keep it simple so that none of us in this church is also in a session now, or real estate people, or like, you are. So we got to keep it simple so we can understand. This is, we want it very clear, this is what our obligation is to this community.
Thank you very much. You can have a seat now. Thank you. Or, does anyone else have any, I don't think so. Okay. So if there are no further questions or concerns or comments, call for a motion.
Make a motion to reapprove.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign nay, and the ayes have it. Okay. The next one involves the same property. This will be a PC 2023-25. This is a sketch plan review. Ms. Elaine?
Yes. Same property, same plat. Again, because it's more than four lots, it needs to be brought to, before the Planning Commission. It's just five simple lots. All of them do meet the minimum requirements for area and lot width for the zoning designation. And so staff is very comfortable saying that this sketch plan complies with the ordinance. So that concludes staff's report.
All right. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Elaine. I will, hearing no comments, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to reapprove.
Have a motion, a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Like, signs nay, and the ayes have it. Okay. This one does involve public hearing. This is PC 2023-29. This is a request to approve the name of a public park at 218 North Dorgan Street. Ms. Elaine?
Yes, this is a sweet one. This is a, there's a City Pocket Park, just on the north side of Thompson's Barber School, and just south of the Ideal Funeral Parlor. And the mayor had requested that Reverend Thompson be honored by naming this little pocket park after him. And the Barber College right next to it, he started that, and his son is still running it. And the painted mural on the side of the wall is done in his honor as well. And so this little grass strip here, I believe the city is going to be just turning into a little pocket park, place to sit, and they would just like to name it in honor of Reverend Thompson. So that's the nature of the request tonight.
Any questions? All right. I'll open the public hearing portion of this. If there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of this and would like to come forward, you're welcome to. And I will also ask if there's anyone that's against this to come forward. I don't think we have one, anyone in the audience tonight that will do that. So thank you for coming forward, sir. If you'll give us your name, please.
Hello, this evening, y'all. How y'all doing? My name is William Levi Thompson, Jr., and it's a pleasure to stand up here before you guys, to hear the voting on the purpose and what it is. And again, we're a pleasure and honored, and we're grateful and thanking the city for all that you're doing and will do. And I'm just here to say thank you for the, for the honor. It's, it feels really good. It's indescribable, but thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I appreciate you coming forward.
Yes, sir. I'm glad I was in time, it just got perfect, but all in time. It's all, it's all, it's all in his time.
No, no question about it. This is one of these, again, another feel-good approval here. I mean, it was meant to be, and we just thank you for being here to represent that.
No, we thank you.
All right.
For having me. Thank you, guys.
Okay. No one against, so I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Make a motion to reapprove.
Motion, second, was Ms. Murray, or who was that? Okay. Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, signs nay, the ayes have it. Congratulations. I'm looking forward to that. Can the staff share with us what kind of amenities or what plans are at this point? Is it too early?
We, we actually have a plan. We received a, we actually received a T-Mobile grant, total $50,000 to install the plaza space. So that is where the funding is coming from. The mural is in place, once we.
That mural is great, too.
Yes, yes.
Who was the artist that did that?
Herman Keith. He is originally from Anderson, South Carolina, but he, his studio area is in Orangeburg. He's done a number of things in Lake City and is doing a few things up in Anderson all throughout the state. So he's homegrown.
Very talented.
Fantastic artist.
Yeah.
The, we plan on doing the flat work, the concrete work this fall. We've got to have everything completed by the end of the year, so we'll have all that done here relatively soon and have a, have an opening for it.
Now, will there be an area of, like, picnic tables or chairs or benches or?
We've, we have, I've, I'm using my past life to do this, so I've got some very interesting benches that will allow people to sit in there and reflect, kind of a quiet space. So it's looking forward to having all that.
Good landscaping also?
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. And actually, another good point, we are, we're using, as, as a B city, we're, we're putting all pollinator plants in to, to help continue that effort as, as being a B city as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Moses?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I think we have a second, and it is unanimous. Thank y'all very much.